Welcome everyone to the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting for January 18th, 2022. May I have the first item, please?
Acknowledgement of new Chairperson.
Okay. The Board did have its annual organizational meeting last week, and with that we have a new Chairperson, which is myself, and we also have new officers. And real quick, I'd like to say that Trustee Moses is our Vice Chair, and our Secretary is Trustee Watts, and our Treasurer is Trustee Pachlikov. Now, I also want to take a moment to thank Trustee Thorpe for his leadership over this past year, which has been very difficult. So, thank you so much for all that you've done for us and to help us guide, help guide us.
Thank you, Trustee Thorpe.
We will have an official passing of the gavel ceremony next meeting when Russ is able to join us in person and we can take some photographs.
It's unfortunate that they weren't as slick as when we had a gavel presentation via Zoom.
Virtually. Next item, please.
Call to order and roll call. Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Deambrosio?
Here.
Trustee Moses?
Here.
Trustee Pachlikov?
Here.
Trustee Thorpe?
Here.
President McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Watts, here. Approval of minutes. Approval of the following minutes for the Board of Trustees. Policy Committee meeting, December 13th, 2021. Regular meeting, December 13th, 2021. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved.
I believe we have a motion by Trustee Thorpe and a second by Trustee Deambrosio. Yes, and there is one correction, and I'm just going to read it here. The language was corrected in the December meeting, regular meeting minutes. Item 4A to read Strategic Plan 2020, 2022 through 2024, Board Report 4617. Strategic Priority 1, Excess Goal 2, Increase Enrollment of Underrepresented Students' Populations in Programs Leading to High Opportunity Outcomes, Especially in STEAM, Health Science, and Skilled Trades. Were there any other corrections?
Okay, roll call.
Yes, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Pachlikov?
Yeah.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. Recognition and acknowledgements.
Thank you, President Cavalluna, and Chair McDonald, and members of the Board. My name is Alana Grace Marie Schwartz. I am a 2018 graduate of Lincoln Park High School. I began attending the Art Institute of Michigan to study graphic design soon after my graduation from high school, until they closed their doors about a month later. I found my way to Henry Ford College during the fall of 2019, and I began my studies here as a studio art major. While attending a lecture by Dr. Calvin Harvell about racial microaggressions, I discovered the field of sociology. I soon switched my major and began my studies in race, ethnicity, gender, and other components of sociology. This was the best choice I have made in my life so far. Sociology continuously increases my awareness and answers all of the questions that my mind creates. The best part about this field of study is that I am able to express myself with creativity by doing my sociology art shows, many of which have been sponsored and supported by Henry Ford College and their organizations. Here I have found a new home. The Black Male and Queens Focus Group has welcomed me with open arms and helped me achieve great success here at Henry Ford College. I am a member of the Henry Ford Honors Program and Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. I have participated in fellowships like the Mellon Research Scholar Fellowship and the Inglehart Social Justice Fellowship. I have connected with the University of Michigan Ann Arbor in other meaningful ways also, through the transfer bridges to the Humanities and the Optimize Programs. Now, I am planning to transfer to the University of Michigan Ann Arbor College of LSA this fall, after I achieve my Associate's Degree in Liberal Arts here at Henry Ford College in May of this year. Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC Board Acknowledgement. One, congratulations to Kiara Wilson. Kiara graduated from Sienna Heights University in December of 2021 with her Master's Degree in Business Administration. Two, congratulations to Cynthia Smith. Cynthia Smith graduated from Sienna Heights University in May of 2021 with her Master's Degree in Business Administration. Three, congratulations to all of the Fall 2021 Hawks Academic Team, representing student athletes who completed at least 12 credit hours with a GPA of 3.5 or higher. Forty-nine students representing all sports teams are included on the team, including two golfers, three women's basketball players, five volleyball players, six men's basketball players, eight softball players, eight wrestlers, and 17 baseball players. Eight student athletes earned a perfect 4.0. Four, for the fourth week straight, the men's basketball team has received a top 20 national ranking. The Hawks are ranked 11th in the Basketball Poll released on January 10th. Congratulations and go Hawks. Five, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Henry Ford College and the University of Michigan are hosting a peace rally on January 20th from noon to 1:00 p.m. Participants will meet in the U M Dearborn University Center and march across their campus and onto Henry Ford College campus. The event will end at Henry Ford College in the ASCC Rosen Hall Rooms, Building O, with presentations and refreshments. This event is open to the public, and all are encouraged to attend. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, Ms. Schwartz, I'm so glad you chose HFC as your new home. And you have obviously shown some success, and I wish you continued success in all your endeavors. Any questions from anyone?
Thank you.
Trustee Moses?
Thank you, President McDonald, Chair McDonald. I am also very proud of your accomplishment that you're going to the University of Michigan after achieving your associates from here. This is a great accomplishment, and this is what we do here, to see examples of you. I'm really also very pleased to hear that you're very involved on campus. You're not here just for the academics, but also the entire experience. And joining the Black Males and Queens Group, Dr. Carvell is our favorite professor here, just FYI.
Me too.
I just wanted to ask you, now that you're going to go to one of the best universities in the nation, right, Trustee Thorpe, right? So, will you put in a good word for Henry Ford College?
Most definitely.
That's all I ask of you. Best of wishes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Watts?
From one alum to a future, go Blue. So, what are your long-term plans at the University of Michigan?
So, when I begin attending in the fall of this year, my major will be sociology still. I will still be pursuing Black History and Culture. I plan on having a submajor of Law, Justice, and Social Change.
Okay. And then, I know that you had mentioned your art shows. Do you have any coming up?
Coming up, so Black History Month is next month. The Black Male and Queens Focus Group will be doing several presentations during that month. We don't have set dates yet, excuse me, we don't have set dates yet. We actually are discussing those tomorrow, but they will be available on the Black Male and Queens Focus Group page under the Henry Ford website.
And the one thing I would say is that if you're going, you had mentioned going into law, make sure you check out the Law Library at the University of Michigan. Fordson's high school here, their library was also mimicked after the event laws. It's cool. So, it's quite a feat. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Thorpe?
You mentioned being part of the Black Male and Queens Group. With us being virtual for the last year and a half, how has it gone with membership in the club? Has it been able to stay active even though you're not necessarily getting together?
Yeah, it was tough at first, of course. I'm sure many people have felt that way, too. But thanks to, like, the emails that Henry Ford sends out, they help us a lot publicize the group, and also we've been able to maintain a strong network with just students in general. So, currently, we actually have a really good turnout, and hopefully our Black History Month presentations next month will be filled with new students and new people.
Thanks.
Cavalluna, does he want a chance to speak? I was about to ask him, because I would be surprised if he didn't have something to say.
Well, this is my first time speaking through a device like this. I can't see any of my colleagues on the board, but I can see some of my colleagues in the cabinet. How about Vice President DeLong? How's my volume? Is it good? Okay. Ms. Schwartz, good to see you. I wish I could see you in real life, and I apologize that I can't. But, you know, many times folks like you stand at that podium and explain their background and what they've done at the college, and I have to pull a little bit more out of them. But you are such a great advocate for HFC and such an inspiration for all of us. I really don't have any questions for you, because you're such a good advocate for yourself and HFC. I would just echo what I've heard from my colleagues on the board here, that we're proud to have you come from HFC. We're excited to see what you do, where you're headed, and if you can find time on your path to greatness to say HFC was a good place for you for a short time, we'd be honored.
Thank you. I'm also proud, of course.
Good luck to you, Alana.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Schwartz, you are not obligated to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Next item, please. President's items?
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you allowing me to join you today in the distance modality that so many of us have had to endure. I have to say, my strong preference would be to be there with you today, but as some of you may have heard, I do have some small children who are completely well and fine, but did positive tests for COVID-19. And so, being in my home with them, I just couldn't stay away from them, frankly. So, I'm honoring our protocols, and I wish I was with you, but I do want to honor our rules. So, I'm zooming in. My hope is that this won't be something I have to do very often or maybe ever again, but if technology fails us, I've asked my colleague, Vice President Sackowski, to briskly come up and put himself back in the seat that he once occupied as interim president, and all I'll ask is that if that has to happen, he not show me up, like I know he can. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and while I know that you all, trustees, are not serving as school board members in your seats right now, tonight, I do want you to know that I appreciate your service to our public school district. It's been a heck of a year, maybe even two, serving on school boards, and I've sat in the back row of your meetings watching it, and I want you to know that I appreciate your service to our community, which also bleeds over into your service here at our college. And part of that service is electing a leader and having a good leader represent you. And while we'll do this more formally and with more pomp and circumstance, certainly in February, I do want to recognize your erstwhile leader, Chairman Jim Thorpe, for a very good tenure during a pandemic that, of course, we all figured it was going to end early in his tenure, the pandemic ended early in his tenure, and it just kept going, and he served us all well. And I do plan, as I mentioned, to do what is a nice tradition here at HFC, which is to give him a memento of our college's appreciation for his leadership, like we give out every outgoing chair, and we'll have photographs of that in February. But like Chair Thorpe, the pandemic was supposed to be done in 2021, and here we are in 2022. And Madam Chair Roxanne McDonald, it looks like the pandemic has stuck around for you, so you get to enjoy some of this yourself. I welcome you to the Chairperson's seat. I look forward to working with you, and just the first three weeks of January have shown, there's an important and close relationship between the Chairperson and the President's office, especially when things are changing quickly. And I look forward to a time when maybe we're not talking every day, but until then, I've enjoyed our early liaison relationship between the Board and the college, and I wish you all the best. I also want to thank and congratulate a couple groups of people at the college who have done really fantastic work early in the semester here. And we are early in our semester. We had the state of the college a couple weeks ago, and already, we've had to do some difficult things that we didn't expect to do. One of them was a large number of our faculty are teaching face-to-face, and they are teaching in the K Building, which is also known as the Liberal Arts Building, and that building had some issues getting the temperature to maintain a healthy, warm temperature for our Januaries in Michigan. And so, those faculty members had to, on the drop of a dime, pivot back to a distance modality for a week, and now they're back in face-to-face. But I know that wasn't imposition on them, and I thank them for the work that they had to do so quickly. And also, I'll just be candid, I heard from some of the folks that were not pleased by having to make that change, and I hope that, I hope that, you know, you're always welcome to give us feedback on that. I also want to say thank you, and frankly, just please keep it up to our friends and colleagues in the custodian staff. This is a tough job anytime. I know that, because I've done half a shift with one of them. But it's a particularly tough time because of how important the job is during the pandemic and how difficult staffing needs are on that front. And so, every custodian at HFC is doing extraordinary work, and I appreciate them greatly, and I want them to know that without their work, we simply couldn't operate as a college. So, on behalf of everyone, from the Board to students, faculty, and staff, I want to say thank you to our custodial staff. During our last board meeting, Madam Chair, I mentioned that we lost a colleague in the Welcome Center, Ms. Hyster, and I wanted to report to you that we had a very nice vigil for her. It was outdoors and socially distanced. It was put on by the President of SSA, and it was a very nice event, and the college leadership was there and supporting it, but frankly, not leading that event. It was led by SSA and Ms. Hyster's colleagues and teammates and family. And for those of you still mourning her loss, I want you to know I'm thinking about you. And while just a small token of our appreciation for her hard work, we are proud that the foundation has named a scholarship in her honor. Of course, we've also, since our last board meeting, had the devastating loss of a real legend at HFC, that's John McDonald. And I was really just taken aback that I wasn't able to attend his ceremony that was on Sunday here in Dearborn. And I know so many of you all attended, and I want to say thank you to those who did attend. Now, some of you all attended like me in a virtual setting, but some of you all attended in person, and I want to just make a few comments about that. Of course, trustees were in attendance, and I believe Trustee Pachlikov was there, Trustee Mary Pachlikov was there, and of course, our Chair, Chair Roxanne McDonald was there. Vice Presidents of the college and many other staff were in attendance. Vice President Nealan and Sackowski joined me virtually attending, and Vice President DeLong and Vice President Best attended. Vice President Best, as you may know, is very accomplished in his faith, his Christian faith, and he was honored and did a wonderful job as an invocation for John McDonald's memorial ceremony. You also probably know our friend and colleague, Vice President of AFT, Eric Rader. He gave a moving eulogy of John McDonald. That was something to be proud of as a member of the HFC community. Our friend and Chair of the Foundation Board, Denise McDonald, and the beloved wife of John McDonald, also gave a eulogy of her husband. I was also moved, and I know many of you were also moved by the touching reality that a child, speaking about their parent, in this case, their father, about his life was a very nice thing to see from John's daughter talking about him. And so, I'll just say, on a personal note, to my colleagues and to John and to John's family, I regret not being able to be there in person. Certainly, if I would have been able to be there, I would have been. And I thought it is a difficult thing to do, to pay tribute to someone, and it was done in a very thoughtful and honorable way. We, as a Board, of course, and at the college, want to pay tribute to John McDonald, and it was my intention to do that at this board meeting. But I frankly want to be in person when I talk about John's legacy at our college and give his family or his family's representatives a token of our appreciation for his service. And I know that the Board Chair agrees with that. So, we are going to wait until February, when we do have a photographer to make that information known. Also, we plan to have what I call our team picture with the Board in February. I wanted to do it this month, but because I can't be there, I'm asking, and the Chair has agreed, that we'll be back in February with a photographer, where we'll take a picture of the passing of the gavel from Chairman Thorpe to Chairman McDonald. We'll also have a photograph with the Board, and I look forward to that. It's a, I called a team picture, and I look forward to that very much. I will pause for questions, and then I want to make just one comment about what I'm excited to see and hear from my new colleague, well, not new, but almost kind of new, my new colleague, Tracy Davis, who's going to talk to you in response to a question from the Board last month. But before I talk just a bit about her and her work, I'll pause for questions on anything I've mentioned so far, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions? It doesn't look like there's any questions. President Cavalluna?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Your secretary probably will call the next item, and I don't want to steal the thunder, but I just want to say, Ms. Davis has been working hard on this. She's an Assistant Director at HR. You know, Tracy, I feel badly about this. This is the first chance I would have had to, I think, see you in person, and I went and blew it. But I'm excited to show you off in your skills and your advocacy and the work you've done on this project. And I would say to my colleagues at the college, Ms. Davis is a great new addition to our college, and I would also compliment Dr. Gonko for her selecting Ms. Davis. And I know it's hard to believe, but I thought, Madam Chair, I would talk less when I was on the computer, but it seems like that hasn't been the case. But I will stop now, and I look forward, I'm here, I'm going to mute, but Madam Chair, if you have any questions for me, please let me know. But I think I'll hand the mic back over to you and watch passively.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Special reports, Abide Talent Management Strategy, a presentation by Mr. Tracy Davis, Human Resources Assistant Director and Performance Development Engagement.
Thank you. Dr. Gonko, did you want to say anything at all?
Yes.
Feel free. Just massively put you on the spot.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. I just want to give a brief introduction beyond what President Cavalluna has already shared. Ms. Davis joined the Human Resources Department last spring as our Assistant Director of Performance Development and Engagement, but even that lengthy title doesn't encompass all of the work that she is responsible for and all that she has done for our HR team. Ms. Davis is also instrumental in overseeing the talent acquisition or hiring aspect of our HR function here, and she has done a lot of really great work in helping us move the needle in developing a strategy that is going to advance our diversity, equity, and inclusion work as it relates to how we hire our talent here at the college. And that's the focus of tonight's presentation. It's also very timely, as you will see that it is called now the Abide Talent Management Strategy, and I would like to link that for you to the Strategic Plan that is also on tonight's agenda for your consideration and approval. And recall that in that Strategic Plan document, we did include an abide, achieving belonging, inclusion, diversity, and equity component, and this work now dovetails very nicely already into our, hopefully, new strategic plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Davis. Thank you.
That's my boss. Thank you. I hope you're going to be patient with me. I hate having my back to an audience when presenting, so if you don't mind, I'm going to pivot just a bit. And Dr. Gonko stole my thunder with the second slide, which is, you were originally introduced to this earlier last year as the DEIB Recruitment Strategy. We have now changed that to abide. As you heard Dr. Gonko mention, that is to more seamlessly align with the acronym that is going to represent our strategic plan. And I believe, Dr. Nealan, were you the one who came up with abide?
I'm not trying to steal any thunder, because I know that my boss hates acronyms. I would say that it was somebody else.
So, somebody else, Dr. Nealan, came up with abide, and we figure it just made sense as opposed to having all these acronyms that our President loves floating around. Let's just be seamless. The other reason for changing from just DEIB to abide is the advancing. And part of that really made sense in the sense that we were already doing some things. This is about just continuing to improve and get better, as opposed to, no, we were horrible, we got to start everything over. That's actually not correct. So, that's why we changed to abide. The next part is that we moved from Recruitment Strategy to Talent Management Strategy. And the reason for that is originally recruitment specifically dealt with who we were bringing into the college, but we also thought it was important to make certain that we were valuing those who are currently here. And that means more of a comprehensive strategy for not just those we bring in, but for those of us who are already here. So, that is why we have moved from DEIB Recruitment to Abide Talent Management Strategy. So, I'm going to spend just a few seconds. I want to run through a few slides for you. Let's start with our agenda. The first is that I'm going to review our overall sections, and I'm going to spend a little bit of time on the section that talks about our initiatives. I'll move forward to our two phases for our approach. We're going to move from there into, oh, sorry, missed one thing. Not just the two phases of our approach, but I also want to spend some time talking about why we approached it this way. I then want to move into a little bit of information about design in terms of methodology around how we constructed the strategy, and of course, implementation, which I'm also going to spend a few extra moments on, because there are some successes I really want to make certain that we highlight. The next thing is to talk about our next steps, which includes our evaluation and review. And I also would like to then end with any questions, comments, or discussion. Is there anything I can answer for anyone before I move forward with the presentation? Crickets? All right, let's go. Okay. So, there are several large sections in which you'll see, once this is published and is printed, is that it's broken up into several different sections. The first is our actual recruiting statement, which addresses social justice. The next two are the approach and design, which I'm going to talk about a little bit more. The next section, Section 5, is defining our abide commitments. And what that means is being very clear about what we mean by belonging, inclusion, diversity, and equity, so that everyone hears the same language, everyone's on the same page, and that we all, as departments, can complement each other by using the same language and thought processes. The next is our statements of practice, and this is what our HR department and our team members, particularly in talent acquisition, are committing to. Next, we move to implementation. And again, these are initiatives that we've already started, but also specifically those successes, and of course, our evaluation and review process, which is currently still in development, but we've already started prompting how we want to measure our success. Now, if you're looking at the visual, you'll notice that I have skipped number seven, and that is because I want to take a little bit of extra time and focus on just number seven. So, I want to talk to you just quickly about our initiatives. Now, the section is titled Proposed, but I do want to be very clear that most of these we have already implemented or are in the process of implementing, and we have some successes. We begin with education. Education is more than just training and development of our external colleagues, but it is also continuing to improve the subject matter expertise of those who are working on this initiative and those who are carrying out some of the initiatives. We move forward to position postings. This one is really important, because it is about the way we post our positions, so that we can attract a larger pool of individuals. that we can attract a larger pool of individuals, which takes us very nicely into sourcing. If posting is how we post, then sourcing is where we post. So we need to be able to find people who are going to say, Henry Ford College is the place I want to be. We move from there into the pre-interview process, and this is about preparing candidates, preparing applicants in terms of best practices, so they can present their best foot forward. What we know historically is that underrepresented populations don't always perform well in interviews. Chair McDonald, you gave us a very spirited personal story that I can easily relate to. Some of us just don't interview well. Some of us are excellent salespeople, and we know that there's no correlation between necessarily performing well in an interview and being an excellent employee. We move from there to interview, I'm sorry, I'll back up. One second. I messed up. There we go. Interview questions. So we want to maximize the time we spend in our interviews. We have eliminated questions that are time wasters. We're focusing specifically on the needs of the position, and we're making certain that they are aligned with the job description, competencies, and what will later be aligned with competencies for performance. We move next to hiring and search committees. We want to make certain that we have a cross-representation of people across the campus, not just in terms of departments, but again, diversity of thought. We move from there to evaluation. Evaluation is really what we wanted to focus on in terms of ensuring that our selection process is equitable across the board. And then finally, post-interview. This is really important to me personally, because this is our opportunity to get feedback, or more specifically, feed forward about, or information from people who've already gone through the hiring process. Tell us, how was it for you? What could we have done differently or better? So next, we move to our two phases for approach. In the initial phase of approach, we focused specifically on the D and E, diversity and equity. And this included location, where do we find people? It includes selection. It includes conversation. It includes, and conversation, if I want, let me back up for that a second. That is, once again, how are we communicating, and how can we improve the communication process with our external applicants and candidates? We move from there into, again, not just selection, but also one of the very final things, which is extremely important, and that's induction. How are we bringing people onto the campus in terms of onboarding? So once we onboard you, that takes us nicely into the second phase of the approach, which talks about retention, veneration, and promotion. Retention is, once we get you here, how do we keep you here? How do we keep you engaged? How do we keep you happy? And then we move forward into veneration. Are we respecting and valuing your voice? Are we making certain that you're heard? Are we making certain that you're valued? And then finally, something also less close to my heart is promotion. Again, once you're here, once you're happy, hopefully, have you thought about how we're going to make certain that HFC is the place you retire from? Have we created a succession plan for you so that you can see a promotional path for yourself? We are in an environment where we are competing with way too many organizations, and we've got to be the employer of choice, not just the school of choice for our students, but the employer of choice for our colleagues. We got to keep you here. And we want you to know that we want you to grow with us personally and professionally. We move then from approach into design. And again, design was about the methodology around creating the strategy. We wanted to take some time to review with our internal and external stakeholders, met with a lot of groups, got a lot of conversation, had a lot of back and forth about, well, have you thought about this? Here's a question we need to ask. Now, I do want to be really clear here, even though we reviewed with stakeholders, not everybody's suggestion was perfect, nor did it make its way into the strategy. Sometimes people just talking about stuff. Okay, thank you. I value your opinion. But that doesn't mean that it made it in. The bigger point is that we heard you, we hear you, we're listening to you. Let's consider how to make it work out for everyone, so that this is not a strategy focused on one affinity group or one department, but that it is holistic and college-wide. We then moved to implementation. And this is one that I'm going to spend a little bit of time on, because these are our challenges, our successes. We have had quite a few successes since we implemented, over 15. I'm only going to hit on a couple of them, but I do want to make certain that you're aware of them. So one of the first two that I've already talked about is, in our job postings, we're embracing non-traditional skill sets and focusing more on competencies to attract more candidates. We are advertising our positions by eliminating language that is not inclusive or outright exclusive. We've engaged with NeoEd, which is a new HRIS system. And NeoEd, one of the things that is really, really cool about NeoEd that we love, is the applicant tracking system includes an option for blind applications. So then there, that assists in terms of minimizing, not necessarily completely eliminating, but minimizing bias. So really excited about that feature of NeoEd. We've changed the way we communicate with candidates to prepare them for the interviews. We've changed the way we ask questions in our interviews. We've changed the way we create rubrics to score and evaluate our candidates. And we've started several digital initiatives, including a Welcome to HFC video, a virtual campus tour, and an introduction to departments and to individuals and team members. We've launched our candidate experience survey. Again, that's post-interview. How do we do? How'd you feel about it? What can we do differently? We've launched a search committee survey, and that's post-selection. What did we do well? What do we need to do differently? Did you get the people you needed to get to make the best selection? And then finally, I'm very proud of these last two, is that we've certified 100% of our talent acquisition team members in DEIB, and we have certified 100% of our talent acquisition team members to be search advocates. Now, it's only two of us, but it's still 100%. You'd be mad at that if you want to, but it's still a win as far as our. All right, so let's go. Next thing, as we wrap up. Evaluation and review. This is currently in progress. But the main question here is, are we doing what we said we were going to do? And what does it look like on campus? A year from now, two years from now? Do we have a faculty and staff that's representative of our community? Do we have people who are engaged? Are we seeing a great migration out of HFC somewhere else? Are we seeing people saying, hey, that's where I want to be, that's a great place to work? So we're working currently on metrics so that we can measure our successes. All of this sounds great on paper, but unless we can put some numbers to it and see some action happening, all it is is great lip service. So we want to make certain that we're measuring our progress, and then we want to make certain that we're communicating it, so that everybody knows, you didn't just do this just to do it, it's really making a difference. So as I wrap up, that's it for me. What questions may I answer for any of you?
Trustee Watts?
Comment. Love the presentation.
Thank you.
Love the detail with everything that you were putting in this new initiative. So you were saying, and this struck me, because I think this is of value, you were asking for feedback from those that you have interviewed or those that you have hired?
Oh, no, actually, it's three. I'm glad you pointed that out. People we've interviewed, people we have hired, and those we did not select, because there may be some nuggets of information from them, too. Even those who we may have offered a position, and they turned us down. You know? Why are you pickers?
So you're just gathering data from everybody. And are you then also giving feedback to those who maybe have not, were not hired, but then are asking for feedback, to say like, hey, what could I, as an individual, have done better? Or what are my, what are my skill sets do I need to grow in?
Good question. We just had a conversation with someone who was not an internal candidate, who was not selected for a position, and they asked that. And we were able to provide some step-by-step information. Here's where we think you can grow, and here's where we are able to assist you. Not necessarily as much with our external candidates, but definitely if they ask.
And I think that's so valuable, because I think that will resonate with them, the fact that you've taken time to give them feedback and maybe make themselves a stronger candidate if they were to come back.
I'm going to give myself a pat on the back for another one. So one of our candidates who wasn't selected for a position really thanked us for the pre-information we gave them during the interview process. This candidate said, I haven't interviewed in 15 years. I don't know what to say and do. And she really thanked us for all of the upfront best practice information, even though she did not receive the position. She said, it's helped me as a person. And you know, we're here as good corporate citizens, too. Let's do some good stuff, even if you don't join us.
And then one more. So you were talking about, because I think you've revamped every single touch point that you could think of in terms of the HR process. When posting jobs, is it the same sort of verbiage that you're using, or are you changing the verbiage? Because sometimes I find that when your positions are posted, it's at such a high level that I think it intimidates some people when they apply. Are you, is that a factor going into this?
It is absolutely a factor. So there are two things that we've done differently. One thing is take out exclusionary language, preferred candidates, things like that. Because again, the data has shown that minority populations or underrepresented populations and women will only apply if they meet 100%. Men will just apply if they meet like 65 or 70. So you know, we're kind of messing ourselves up on a whole bunch of levels. So we've taken out some of that wording. One of the other things that I've asked us to remove is wording that's very specific to HFC. So in a lot of our postings, I saw references to, hey, that's a HFC thing. Now, illusion, colleague is known in the educational community, or even more so, we can talk about learning management systems, which most people can get. So if we have language that's so exclusive, that has all those things in it, we're missing a significant number of people. For truthfully, Steph, we don't teach you how to do anything.
No, it sounds great.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this.
No problem.
Just a couple real quick, because those were all very good questions.
I just read an article recently about somebody from quite a few decades ago, his style of interviewing people. And he basically was giving them a task rather than just a list of questions. I heard a lot about, we have questions, questions, questions. But that doesn't always let you have insight as to how they think and would perform in real time. Have we considered any of that, rather than just having a paper interview, so to speak, in order to assess somebody who might not be as skilled in one way of interviewing with a task that would display the skills that would help you interpret whether they would be a good candidate or not?
Absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that. Quite a few of our positions, I won't say all of them, but quite a few of our positions either have a project that we send to the candidate, and they have time to work on it and perfect it before it's presented to us. From our faculty perspective, I think I see a couple of faculty members here, a teaching presentation. We also ask for diversity or teaching statements. We also ask questions that are either situational or behavioral, so that we can understand thought processes. We've changed the way we ask questions using the T E D S P I E method. T E D S is tell, explain, uh, what's my D? Tell, explain, demonstrate, I think, and S is specify. And then P I E, is precisely, in detail, specifically. So we ask people to walk us through steps, give us a linear perspective or global perspective as to how you would approach a situation. Then we get insight into behavior, into thought processes, and into how they could perform in a situation. We also ask for examples about previous experience. Tell me what you have done in this situation, so that we can understand your thought processes. But your first question is, a lot of our positions do have some sort of project that they work on.
Right.
And that's weighted with everything else. It's not just a great project, but you know, everything else.
Right, in correlation with.
Absolutely.
The other thing, as you mentioned, that you have a software program, I guess, that excludes bias to some extent. Can I assume that all kinds of biases, gender, racial, ethnic, cultural, whatever, not just one specific bias?
So let me be really clear. We will never eliminate bias 100%. All of us have biases, and there's a bias codex that I present in a training that has over 250. And at any given time, all of us actively have about 10 biases. So we'll never completely eliminate. What this program does is give us an opportunity to send blind applications to hiring managers. So that allows us to take off gender, it allows us to take off race, and sometimes there are other things in personally identifying information that could influence someone. I will not tell you that it will eliminate bias 100%. It will reduce it. And we're working toward that.
That's the best we can ask for.
That's the best we can ask for. And there are some things that we just know upfront, biased people. I'm like you, I see you and them on a application, I'm like, hire that person, even if they're terrible. But that's my bias. So we want to make certain that we're taking over things. And Michigan State people could just, they'll need to apply at all for us. Ohio State people.
So did I, dear one.
But yes, thank you for that. What else may I answer for you?
Trustee Thorpe could be asked something.
You're a candidate.
Did I just mess up big time?
He's a spark.
That's okay, you know? When you play in Ohio State, I root for you.
Trustee Muzz.
Yeah, I have two questions and a comment. Obviously, with, I'm really interested in researching the acronyms that you mentioned about the asking questions, behavior questions.
Okay.
I know General Motors uses the STARTO method, which is situation, task, action, result, and then learn. They added the L now.
Yeah, I added a T. I call mine START, and the T for me is teachable moment.
Yeah.
What you learned from. So yeah, same thing.
Absolutely. But you mentioned metrics here, so, and I wanted to know, and you mentioned something in the end, which is very, very important for us, is we want to make sure that our faculty, our staff are reflective of our student population. How do we say we're getting there? Or do we have metrics that are smart goals that are tied to a time period where we say we're getting into that place where we actually have true representation on our faculty and our staff?
Good question. The first thing I want to do is stay away from quotas. So I'm going to be very careful about setting a goal that says, I'll hire this, buy this at this amount, or, don't want to do that. First of all, it's illegal. Second, we clearly just don't want to set that unfair precedent, because ultimately, we want to hire the best person for the position.
Absolutely.
Now, we hope that that's a person who's representative of our population, but may not always be. And we don't want to do anything that would be either a type of reverse discrimination, clearly don't want to do that, which is another reason why we're bringing in the blind searches. The second part of your question, though, is that we have started pulling metrics from our, from our previous searches. We have had over 60 searches, I believe, in the last year. And I'm looking at metrics for each step. How many people applied? Who are they? How many people made it to the first interview? The second interview? Who was then offered the position, and then who was hired? And we want to look at what that continuum looks like. If we have a huge diverse pool, but we still end up only hiring a very specific type of person, then I've got some questions about that. Why does that happen? Doesn't mean that's not the best person, but have we considered along the way? We also have to be very careful that we are still aligned with HLC's accreditation requirements. So we cannot just bypass the requirements that are set up particularly for faculty members. But they do have something called opportunity hires when we have a difficult time filling a position. But to your point, what I'm going to look at in the future, and this is going to take a little bit of time, because we still, we just started this, is we want to start looking at what our campus population looks like, what our surrounding community looks like, and again, do we have those numbers on campus? Keeping in mind, those numbers are self-reported, and not everyone wants to disclose that information.
Okay.
And also understanding that diversity is multivariate, not just gender and race.
Absolutely. Question about the software side, as far as getting from the various touches, but I still see the applying, when you are applying, it's still the same site. Is that going to change any time soon?
It is going to change. Goodbye cornerstone, hello NeoEd, January 28th. It is done.
So when it, when it regards to that, the people who have applied there and currently in the pool?
We're working on it.
Are those going to be migrated over?
Transferring over.
Yeah.
Sort of. Let me back up and explain that.
Yeah.
We, data in is only as good as data in. So we don't want to put So we don't want to put in horrible data from cornerstone into the new program. We want to put in clean data. So what we've asked particularly for adjuncts, because that's our largest pool of candidates, is to reapply and reapply using the criteria with their official transcripts. So that when we take those applicants to the hiring committees or to the search committees, they have good data that's up to date. Some people have applied five years ago, five times for the same position, and you're not qualified. So we, again, we can't circumvent HLC. But what we can do is ask someone who's interested to reapply in the new system. The staff positions, for the most part, have been migrated over. And there'll be a little bit of overlap between cornerstone and the new software. So that we can make certain we have a, excuse me, a seamless transition. I shouldn't say seamless. We have a relatively seamless transition. All transitions come with some glitches.
Absolutely. I work in software, so I don't know, understand those glitches come with migrations.
I'm sorry, you say you work in software?
Yeah.
Okay, good. You can fix it when we.
I can't be paid by the college, unfortunately, but I'll do it.
That is sound good.
Corona.
Well, I told you.
I know. So well, those folks who are, for example, have applied for positions and may not have been even called for an interview, when they, when you move them to the new system, will they get some kind of notification saying, hey, we have a new system? If you would still like to be considered, come and apply.
Ten steps ahead of you. We did that in June, August, and another email went out in December to say, please make certain that you check your email. Now, some people have already done it, so they will not receive duplicate emails. These are just for people who may not have responded to the first one or two.
So you're saying the new system is live, but it's actually in a different environment that we still don't know? Or when these folks get these emails, do they?
Oh, they've already gotten them. We sent those either through.
They're being told to go register in the new system? So the new system has been live, then?
No. There's a background process for integration.
Okay.
That has happened because all of our current data has been moved over into that environment. It is not live for our users on campus outside of the integration team, which is the HR team and the IT team right now.
I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What else can I answer for you?
Trustee Barry.
I got a comment and a question. I do agree with my colleague, Trustee Watts. Great presentation. You definitely got my attention when you said position posting. That's a very powerful strategy. We don't want to get into quotas and we don't want to get into reverse discrimination. So it's very, very important to open up access to most. My question is, you did such a good job. I would like to see you come back. At what point do you feel? At what point do you feel that you don't have enough data that you were able to measure progress and come back and report to us?
Your term is over.
You got it. Let's, let's say a good six months or so of active, full-blown initiative implementation. Some of the stuff we've already started.
Sure.
Some of it we've already started collecting. But I think the data is a little too new and too raw. And also understanding that this is a long-term project.
Of course.
That is just a single component of a much larger strategic plan. So it would probably be a little premature for me to give you an actual date. But I can say that I've committed to my boss to giving her reports. And I'm sure she will make certain that those are transparent to the degree possible with all of you. So I'd like to see some movement immediately. We have in some areas, but in terms of actual numbers, like do we have this number of people on campus who meet this criteria? It's a little too early for me to give you that yet.
Great. You know what? You said it's a long-term process. That's an understatement. But this is, this discussion has been going on for two decades now at this level. So I am very, very, very happy that we're at this point. Thank you very much.
I was pretty clear in saying, I don't want to write something that sits on the shelf. We're either going to do this or we're not.
Thank you.
And I really genuinely don't want to keep having to wait to move forward with implementing it on the campus. Thank you, though. Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one. To follow up, you had mentioned the pre-interview checklist that you offered to those. I had noticed that Ford, I don't know if they still have this, but last year they had put on their applicant or employment application page for women who have been out of the workforce. Is that something similar to, is that something that we have or something similar?
I will tell you exactly what we have. If I can find it on page pretty quickly. What it is looking like for those particular postings is a couple of prompts. In this, oh, I'm sorry, that's our pre-employment email. Let me make sure I get to the right page of it. Hold on one quick second. I want to answer your question correctly. Okay. So under our pre-interview initiatives, there are a couple of things we've done. We've started, the email is titled, "We're excited to start the conversation." So people know I'm interested in you already, not just a blank email that, you know, is kind of broke. We give an overview of the hiring process, what they can expect during the interview. If it's virtual, basic presentation tips, including how to navigate a virtual environment, Microsoft Teams, sheet sheet, or the option to have a Zoom interview if they prefer. Information about who we are, the culture, work environment, mission, vision, values. We also give them specific roles and teams about who's going to be on their interview. So people know how to assist in framing their portion of the conversation about questions. We've given them links to the About HFC page, which highlights our equal educational and employment opportunities and non-discrimination policy, and again, our mission, vision, values. And what I'd like to start including is a link to this document as well, so that they can read, here's what we're doing for you in advance. We have a guide to answering situational and behavioral interview questions, again, using the STARTLE method or STARTLE, as you've heard. We give them information on what happens after the interview so that they know what to look forward to in next steps, excuse me, next steps, and a link to a survey that asks for their feedback. Now, what I did not include in that is that we also give them several links, external links, for how to perform interviews, including things like, not just women out of the workforce, but how to create a resume that's reflective of your true skills. So a lot of people are like, yeah, I'm just a homemaker. No, that means you're a multitasker, a boss, a counselor, a, you know, a this, 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 a janitor, a plumber. You got a lot of other stuff going on. How do we highlight those skills? So there are about three separate sections that we give links to for those best practices and we update those, we rotate and update those. The main thing now is how to present yourself if you've been out of work due to the pandemic.
I mean, it sounds like anybody that would click on any of those links feel as though it's welcoming and that they are seen.
There you got it. Got to be a, if we're saying we're welcoming, then we need to walk the talk.
No, it's fabulous. So thank you.
Good questions. Trustee Barry.
I'd like to thank President Cavalluna and Vice President Gonco for their leadership in moving this college in the direction that we're going. Employee of choice. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just have a comment. I am so glad that I saw you do a presentation in person. Once again, you are just extremely impressive. So thank you.
Apologize if I was shifting. I haven't worn high heels in two years. So trying to stand up here. So thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all for your time. Thank you, everybody.
Next item, please.
All right, I'll try to follow up with this, but it's not going to be as fun. Discussion items, A fiscal year 2022 mid-year budget adjustment, board report number 4622, Vice President Sackowski.
I can't follow that.
We don't expect you to.
My raise is in there though, right?
Wow, but it says adjustment. We're not certain.
Right, right. Good point.
I shouldn't be, it shouldn't be too long. There's a report in your packet. Revenues are adjusted upward by $680,000. Expenses the same amount. Bottom line stays the same from our original budget at $803,000, $806,000. So all we're doing is moving some money around in the various different categories. The biggest increase was state appropriations. We did get a 2% surprise after we had passed the budget in June, so I wanted to point that, point that out. But we did do that. We did accelerate some hiring in the faculty area after the VASP. We were budgeting 179, let's see, 175, but we ended up with 179 for the two semesters. So kind of boring, but it's, you know, things are stable. So any questions?
Stable is good.
Yeah. That's right. You ever watch the movie Hitman's Bodyguard? The slogan, boring is good.
Absolutely.
I had a question.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Oh, she's sort of making that more.
No, so under expenditures, the physical plant, I see that there is a decrease in $239,000. What can we attribute back to?
Physical plant, 200, that, those are all, those are savings associated with vacant positions. We've had a significant number of vacant positions. That's, and above, the line above at the 299,000 in parentheses, again, vacant positions that are fully budgeted but haven't been filled.
Any other questions? Next item, please.
Next item, delegation of hiring process. President Cavalluna.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I feel a little bit like Vice President Sackowski. I'm a little bit scared to follow that presentation, one before him. I'll just check my sound one time. Vice President DeLong, how's the volume? Is that, okay. The, the board took a report from the Policy Committee last month on this question of reviewing the policy that currently exists, requiring all hiring at the college to go through the Board of Trustees with one narrow exception, being that the president has the authority to make a hire without board approval if the hire is necessary to accomplish the educational mission in a time-sensitive manner. The Policy Committee has been meeting and discussing whether that policy should be updated or amended, particularly to alleviate a few concerns that the administration brought to the Policy Committee. If you recall, I went through these in December of 2021, but I'll just summarize them now. The labor market is very tight right now. And attracting skilled and talented members of our team is difficult. And one of the things that is exacerbating that problem is that when a hiring manager decides to select an employee after an interview process that you now know much more about, sometimes in order to wait for a board meeting, that hiring manager will need to wait two, three, maybe four weeks before the employee can be assured of a new position at the college. And in some roles, these people who are looking for new employers have multiple irons in the fire, so to speak. So we went about talking with the committee about ways to reduce that exacerbating factor. And we concluded that there were some positions that may not need the board to vote on them and cause the delay to cause that vote. Now, one avenue to avoid this that has been used in the past is to bring a hiring decision to your meetings at the other institution. But that is not a great solution because anyone who cares to watch your dealings in a public setting for this college would arguably be left without notice that they could see that happening at the P-12 board meeting. So the Policy Committee tasked the administration to draft a proposed policy change that would help alleviate this concern. And the staff did that. And we circulated it to the Policy Committee at the end of last week and CC'd the entire board. That new policy allows for the administration to hire, without the board's approval, those positions at the assistant director level and below. And it also allows for the board to review those type of things, those type of positions under that policy for a week. And that the hiring manager would say, for instance, select to hire a new custodian. And then a week thereafter, the hire would take place. And then during that week, trustees who wanted to give input on that would have the opportunity to contact my office with that need. The draft also changes slightly the exception or the escape valve in this policy to allow the administration to make a hire without board approval, not only for those time-sensitive issues that affect the education mission, but over the overall mission of the college, as long as the board chair agrees. During our policy meeting today, the Chair of our Policy Committee, Chair Barry, recommended that, he thinks it should be an improved draft if it included a sunset provision that would require this policy change to be revisited, I believe he said, by February of 2024, so that we could review and see if the changes did grant the benefit that we hoped without causing any unforeseen circumstances or problems. I asked for a bit of time to find out if there are any statutes or laws that don't allow a board like yours to include a sunset provision. But that if there weren't any laws that I'm not aware of, then that sunset provision would be something we could and would be happy to include in the draft. So the policy directed that I report out to the board that with that change, adding a sunset provision, I believe, at February 2024, that that would be something that the Policy Committee would report out favorably to this board. I also asked how the Policy Committee would feel about moving forward with this if that change were part of this, if this could be moved to an action item in February of this year. In other words, your next college board meeting. And one last item that I mentioned to the Policy Committee that I want you to also be aware of is that that one week waiting period is something that I'm going to review with the HR department to make sure that we can comply with that and that it is not an onerous burden. And I'll report that back to the Policy Committee in February. So to summarize, Madam Chair, the proposed policy that I circulated to the entire board at the end of last week is what the Policy Committee is reporting out favorably today, with the exception that in February, it's quite likely that that draft will include a sunset provision for February 2024. Any questions or concerns from trustees?
Trustee Thorpe.
Was there any specific reason to put the sunset as February of 2024?
I think Trustee Barry would be best to speak at that.
Sure, sure. I mean, I did share at the committee meeting that we have a good team in place right now. Anytime you make a change, there's always unintended consequences. If something comes up, we would be able to, you know, see it, live it. Why February 2024, it just gives President Cavalluna and his team two years to see how this works out and report to us. And in February, it can be revisited by the Policy Committee at that point. I hope that, does that answer your question or?
Yeah, I wasn't, I was just curious as to why. I mean, I know it's two years, but I wasn't sure if there was anything beyond that.
You know, without going too deep into it, I think there's a couple of my colleagues here that, you know, lived through some rough times at this college. We have a, you know, good leader this, you know, we have a good leader at this point and there's trust. So I personally would be okay moving forward with this. But I don't want to be able, you know, we don't want to put the future boards in a position where, you know, issues might come up. And that's why.
So the follow-up questions would be, if nothing happens before then, is the sunset provision then stating that this policy comes off the board at that time?
It would be discussed. So January of 2024, just like, you know, this meeting, there's a, there's a new board. But the following meeting, there'll be a Policy Committee in place and they would have that, you know, they have a discussion and review the last couple of years, obviously with input from the administration.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Mazzu.
Madam Chair, I mean, this policy could also be in review by the Policy Committee at any time. It doesn't have to, you don't have to wait two years. It doesn't have to, you don't have to wait two years to do that. So if there are concerns, any member, any member of the Board can bring that to the Policy Committee for a discussion, and it could be reviewed as well, I believe.
Of course, that's always, that's always true, but we want to give it a chance to see how it works out.
Absolutely, yeah.
So for the, Madam Chair, the way I understand it is this was discussed, and if legal approves it, you and President Cavallone will have a discussion to put it on next month's agenda for a vote.
Yes.
So we're on the same page.
And you're also, President Cavallone, going to look into the language of a sunset and making sure that that is, there's no legal issues with that, correct?
Yes, and, you know, the sunset term is my term, and it's not accurate. I shouldn't have used that term, because when Trustee Thorpe's question pointed out, what Trustee Berry was suggesting is simply that the Board would be obligated to review this in two years. A sunset provision technically usually means that a provision, it becomes, it extinguishes itself, self-actuating at that time. And that's not what Trustee Berry was suggesting. Trustee Berry was simply saying that the administration would be obligated to review this with the Board at that two-year point. And then I also should have mentioned that Vice President Clark noted that it is the administration's intent and goal to review every single policy with this Board on a revolving three-year basis. And Trustee Moses' point is correct, at any time, any policy is up for revision by any trustee.
Thank you for clarifying. I just tried to cover for you, that's all.
Chair McDonald.
Yes.
Just to add to the understanding for, from the Board's position, whenever the Board sees a, a policy that maybe takes away some of their oversight, which this does, that they have traditionally held, especially as it pertains to a policy, those policies, at least in the past practice, and hopefully we will continue to be much more active and up to date on reviewing them, but they can fall through the cracks and be, and be lost in that opportunity to ensure that even though we've given up some degree of oversight or authority in a certain manner, we always have the final authority. But this review process will ensure and give some, a level of reassurance to the Board as it sits today and as it will sit in a couple of years, that we will look at it and make sure that nothing has gone awry by giving up this particular opportunity for us to have the final say on a monthly basis of the hiring process. So if it gives a degree of comfort for us to continue to make sure we have that oversight available and we don't lose that objective, then putting that kind of review process in there, if it's allowable, certainly shouldn't cause anybody any power or concern.
Anyone else? No. The only thing that I had noticed, and I noticed it in the language, and I just wanted to throw it out there for discussion, and I'm trying to remember exactly, but, but the difference between the President will and the President may, and that was just something I noticed in the language of the policy. So I was just wondering if any had, if anybody had any specific feedback on that, if it made any difference to anyone, or Cavallone, if you had any thoughts on that.
There was no discussion of that at the committee meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? It was just something I noticed. Okay, I think the discussion is done, and you're clear with your next steps? Okay.
Yes, and Madam Chair, if, if, if you don't mind, I'll just move to the next one, the next discussion item. I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, I'm taking your new job away from you, but the, the next item is something Trustee Berry asked me to quickly update the Board on, and this one will be very quickly handled, because, as you know, the Policy Committee has been taking reports from the administration on policies and bylaws that were being reviewed, as we just kind of talked about, and were being proposed as not needed or not clear or internally conflicting with others. And so we've circulated to the entire Board, now, I believe, for two months, a list of proposed policies and bylaws to be rescinded. That list is now reprinted there on your agenda, and the, the idea here is that that list will move to an action item. If no, no problematic discussion happens here, then it would be moved to an action item in February.
Any questions on that?
No, I think that kind of goes along with what we've been doing for the last several years, is reviewing all of the, the policies and updating everything. Okay, next item, please.
Citizen Participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who have submitted a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees, and please limit comments to three minutes. I have no, I have no blue cards today.
Okay, next item, please.
Special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which Board members or the President wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude those from the action below.
Anyone?
I have a question on number one, but it isn't going to change.
You don't want to pull it.
Right, I don't want to. Pull it. I just have a question, just to refresh my memory or something.
Okay. We need to have a motion in a second before we take your question.
Read the recommendation.
You'll have to read the recommended action.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Action break.
So move to...
Approve.
Move to approve action item numbered one through five as recommended in this agenda.
So moved. Support.
Okay. I think the so moved was from Trustee Thorpe, and support was from?
Trustee Berry.
Trustee Berry. Okay. What is your question?
Can, can I be refreshed as to how long we are going to be having the Detroit Promise? Was that, was there a length of time to where we would be posting the Detroit Promise students? And, and does it eventually end, or do we have to reapply to be a part of that program?
No, the, the Detroit Promise students are what are now more common, but at the time were what are called free college students that are receiving the last dollar. So the entity that helps them achieve the free college status is something called the MEEF, the Michigan Education Excellence Fund, which is housed in the Detroit Regional Chamber. That group said to the City of Detroit and its high school students, if you graduate from any high school in Detroit and you wish to attend two years at a community college, and this is the way it started, it's now grown, but the way it started is still applicable to HFC, that if you graduate from a high school in Detroit and you want to go to a two-year college, you have to apply for federal financial aid, take as much federal financial aid as you can get, and then whatever you're short to cover tuition, the Detroit Regional Chamber, through its MEEF group, would pay. And that's gone on now since, I think we're, I think we're moving in on year six. Don't quote me on that, Trustee Petlicov, but there is no, there is no agreement with the, the entity that helps those students. But there is an additional level of support that the Detroit Regional Chamber put forth to support these students called Detroit Promise Coaches. And those are, are what this action item deals with, and it's an opportunity to give them an office space on our campus to help do the coaching of these Detroit Promise students. And those, those, they are operating as employees of Henry Ford College, so there's no expiration date associated with them. I do suppose that if somehow or another there, there were no Detroit Promise students at HFC, that those employees, we would have to figure out whether they had a continuing relationship with Henry Ford College. But I, I truly hope that that eventuality doesn't happen anytime soon, because we are proudly the, the college with the most Detroit Promise students of any institution serving those students. And these coaches are dedicated to support them. So the space that we're trying to devote to those coaches is what's the, the movement there on action item one.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure I understood that this wasn't something that was a temporary, because we're, we're looking at a lot of renovations on pieces of property that might not necessarily be utilized in the future, near future even, because we have other concerns to address. So I just wanted to make sure if we're going to invest a certain dollar figure into it, that either it's going to be an ongoing program and/or, I assume we could use that space for something else at some point, but I just want to make sure we're not, as we did in the last one, we're fixing up other office space for our honors program as well in a building that we may or may not have to renovate as well in the near future because of the condition of the building. That's all I want to make sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question that, or not a question, I have a correction that needs to be made under recommended action, staff appointments. Johnny Luna, we have an effective date of 1/17, and that should be 1/19, 2022. So that's just for your information. Okay. We need a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Derry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambroso?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes? President McDonald?
Yes. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Business Acknowledgements and of Correspondence.
Done. Next item?
Board Committee Reports.
Well, there was a Policy Committee earlier, but we covered that. One thing I do want to say about committee reports, I had hoped to have committee assignments done today. I think that was a little aggressive on my part, and I was, I was not able to complete it. I am working on it. I'll get those to you as soon as I'm able. Anyone that's had to do that task before, it's like a giant jigsaw puzzle trying to put the pieces together. So thank you for your patience, but I am working at it. Next item, please.
Requests for Information and/or Future Agenda Items.
Anyone? None? And the next item, please.
Board Member Commentary.
I have some commentary.
Trustee Moses?
Thank you, Madam Chair. See, this past Monday was Martin Luther King Junior Day, and it is an amazing, now federal holiday, recognized federal holiday that we recognize as a nation, something that to reflect definitely on, on Dr. King's legacy, that called for equality, equity, and to think about what he has done and the icons of the civil rights movement and the continuous struggle for dignity, continuous equity, and equal opportunity for all. This college motto mirrors that mission that Dr. King achieved for, and it is something that I hope all of us always aspire for in this college. And I wanted to wish everybody a happy remembrance of Dr. King and his legacy and those who strive and continue to strive for equality and equity in this nation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Berry?
I want to send out my condolences, all of our condolences, to John McDonald's loved ones. As we were walking into this meeting, I shared with Trustee Watts that usually when I sit down at this table, that's the first thing I do is try to locate where John's sitting. I slash we are going to dearly miss him at this college. We are all better people, institution, Henry Ford College, back then it was Henry Ford Community College, is a better place because of John McDonald's service. He was the kind of person that you didn't always agree with, always respected. I had nothing but great respect for the man. I just wanted to share that. I know we're going to have a chance to, you know, present something to his family next month, but I wanted to say that tonight. John, God bless your soul, and we're going to miss you.
Trustee Watts?
Just to follow up with what Trustee Moses had mentioned, and I know the college will be sponsoring an event here on Thursday at 12, or I'm sorry, at 1 o'clock, and I'll be unable to attend, but I did attend yesterday the Dearborn Heights Community and Cultural Relations Commission hosted in MLK Day Walk, and President Winless was one of the hostesses. And it was a great opportunity to be able to join the D7s who were attending, and was also invited to all Dearborn residents as well. And she's not here, but it was a great opportunity and to have some time to reflect. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I want to say two things. One, thank you very much for the Board's confidence in our strategic plan. That is something we're very proud to have your support on, and I, there, there's a whole host of folks who deserve a lot of credit, but there's just, I just need to call out two Vice Presidents who, who deserve the majority of the credit, and they're Dr. Michael Nealan and Dr. Lori Gonco. They, they did something that I wasn't quite sure we'd be able to do, which is lead a cross-functional team in eight weeks to deliver a strategic plan that is concise and really does lay forward for us a pretty challenging set of goals, but something that we can chase and truly, if we achieve, we can call ourselves excellent. And you guys aren't around as much, trustees, but if you were, you'd see their cars in the parking lot many weekends in November and December. And I just, I just want to tip my hat to them and say, thank you, you did great work. And then the second thing I want to mention is, Dr. Gonco and her colleagues like Ms. Davis are, are leading a team at HR that has had a lot of difficulties to go through during my tenure, and not any of them expected to have to deal with a pandemic. But despite a pandemic, despite, you know, having their executive director leave, that team keeps going forward. They're not just dealing, they're progressing. And that presentation about how we're trying to move forward in, in being a sophisticated group of people selecting and hiring people is, is one piece of evidence that I think you can look at with leaders like Dr. Gonco and Ms. Davis, that we're proud to have on the team. And, you know, it's just the truth. HR departments aren't up for awards a lot. In fact, what they usually get is a lot of complaints. And I just want you to know that that HR team is doing really, really good work, and they're serving all of us well. So those are some folks that I, if you get a chance, trustees, maybe tell them they're doing great work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Agreed, absolutely. One other thing I just wanted to add to Trustee Berry's comments is the great work that John McDonald had done for our college. I also just wanted to have everyone keep Denise in their prayers, because she's done great work for the college as well, and also this community. I've served with her on other boards related to Dearborn. They just love this community, so keep them in their prayers, and, and we'll look forward to having a, a more traditional ceremony next. Anyone else? Next item, please.
Future Meeting Dates. Valentine's Day, Monday, February 14, 2022, P-12 Board of Education meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, February 21, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service and Conference Room in the Rosenau Boardroom.
And we are adjourned.